Time is now seven o'clock. I call this meeting to order. Please join me in saying the flag is released. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Misty, will you please call the roll?
Georgia Holmes, President.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Martin Meyer.
Here.
Harleen Kane.
Here.
Sam Powers.
Present.
Ron Richard.
There.
Carol Anne Sworzenbaum.
Here.
Skylar West.
Here.
Okay. Again, I would like to remind all the council that there is a conflict of interest in any of the items that we'll be voting on tonight that you please let the rest of the body know. And I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Also, I'll call your attention to the minutes from the December 18th council meeting. You have those minutes in your package. I would accept a motion to approve those minutes at this time.
I'll make the motion, although there is one correction. On the third page, it reads, typo. Minor teams.
Where is it?
On the third page. It says, "There were only minor teams."
Oh, that was my team.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion to approve the amendments with a minor correction. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of approving the amendments as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have before you the bills in between $119,317.42. Those are itemized in your packages. Accept a motion to approve the bills in between.
Motion to approve the bills in between?
Um, second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Hear any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have current claims of $52,046.21 and accounts payable claims of $58,407.84. I'd accept a motion to approve those current claims and accounts payable claims at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims of $52,046.21 and accounts payable claims of $58,407.84.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve those claims. Are there any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those current claims and accounts payable claims are approved. You also have in your packages the Wells Fargo credit cards of $4,594.34. I'd ask for a motion to approve those charges at this time.
Motion to approve credit cards?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'd open the floor for communications from the public. Are there any communications from the public? I'd recognize Mr. Brett Noctigal this time.
Good evening, everybody. Came here tonight to introduce myself and just briefly, a few moments. My name is Brett Noctigal, publisher of the Fall River County Herald. With me tonight also is the staff of the Fall River County Herald, Cheryl Grimes next to me and Amber Schumacher. Cheryl and I worked together at the Hot Springs Star for a whole lot of years. And Amber Schumacher, since August, has been on the Edgemont Herald circuit. We came together about a month ago as a new family and excited as ever. Tonight, you have on your agenda a resolution to renew the Christian newspaper, which I feel is a very important decision that you have for you tonight. Not too long ago, I was faced with a pretty important decision myself. And looking back at it now, I am so pleased and happy with the decision that I made, what we're a part of now with the Fall River County Herald. In addition to the staff that I presented, Kathy Nelson, of course, is representing the Fall River County Herald covering every meeting and being here. Since our newspaper launch, we also have two other writers, Ben Sanders and Karen O'Farne here tonight. But we're very committed to being the local newspaper for the entire county, for the select community of Hot Springs, as well as the schedule on Walricks. I gave each one of you a letter last week, so if you had a chance to look over that, I tried to touch on some of the things and the reasons for how we came about to the newspaper and where we are today. Since that time, I've looked at the news of the town of Walricks as being Fall River County Herald's official newspaper. So in addition to being the newspaper for the county as well as Edgemont School, we're certainly an established newspaper. And we're very proud to be the Christian newspaper for the city of Hot Springs as well. Other than that, I tried to address most of it I could in that letter, but I thought it'd come as well. If there are any questions that you have that I can answer those questions for you all this year.
I appreciate you giving us all this. I did realize the state of South Dakota set the rates for the legal laws. And that was good of them to provide us with that information. So changes in any other way for us? Cost plus.
There shouldn't be. The only, and I think I mentioned it in the letter, each newspaper kind of has their own way of presenting legals, but the formulas are designed, in some of the ways where it can vary, is newspapers' widths are different, their point size is different, their font selection is maybe different. But the formulas that the state establishes are designed to balance those out. So there may be some, and I couldn't tell you if it's up or down, but it would be minor if there were any actual cost changes to that. The other part of that, too, and I think I mentioned in that, is, you know, will you reach the people you need to reach with the legals? And that's what's been so awesome about our newspaper is every day we've got people coming and saying they're subscribing to the paper. When I walked in, it sounded the same play that they needed after. So our newspaper distribution is certainly growing. It's growing very quickly. New people all the time, and of course, the biggest growth is here in Hot Springs. I foresee us continuing to add circulation based on the app and also new street sales. It's hard for me to give you an exact number right now what our circulation is, but that's something I can easily update as we go along. The reason for that is to get the word out by a newspaper where you're serving it for free for the first three weeks. So at that time, we're printing 2,500 copies a week. When I went back to replace the newspapers with that, I mean leftovers, I could hold in my hands. I mean, people were given them, they were going. This is the first week that we're selling the papers, so when it comes here on Thursday, I'll have a better idea of how many returns are. But we printed thousands first week, we printed 1,200 the next week. But those are continuing to grow. Grocery inserts are going to be added soon. A lot of new things will continue to be added, so I'm sure circulation is going to continue to grow with that.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from the council?
I just thank you for your letter.
Are there any other communications from the public? Is there anyone from the Hot Springs Star, please?
My name is Jordan Littler. I'm representing the Hot Springs Star. I have been colleague of Brett's in the past and was the editor and publisher of the Shadon Record. I am here only on a temporary basis. I want to assure you that the Hot Springs Star is still in business. There will be a new editor publisher in place, Lee, next week. I'm going to be filling in because that person was hired and could not get started right away. So the Lee Enterprises is the owner, as you know, of the Hot Springs Star. It's an established newspaper operation with 50-some daily newspapers and 200-plus weekly newspapers across the country, including the Shadon newspaper and the Hudson Journal. A well-established, we're not a new business, we're not one that's dependent on trying to rustle up people from the area and so on. And I'm not discounting what Brett's doing, he's got a good presence here, I know that from my working with him as editor of the Shadon paper and so on. But I do want to stress the continuity of the Hot Springs Star, it's been a newspaper here for a long time. Lee Enterprises is committed to the Hot Springs Star, and you will have a local staff in hand within the next week or two. I would just like to make that plug for the Star as you completely leave.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll close communications to the public. And at this time, I'd like to make a special award presentation. We have our first Miser Award. Now, we've had some internal debate concerning the title of this. Someone had the audacity to look what Miser meant in the dictionary, and the connotation was not good. But in all seriousness, what we do have here is an opportunity and the idea to highlight the fact that we are, we have a city staff that is working to save the city money and follow the proper procurement procedures in doing their jobs. And one individual this past year has really stood out above the rest, and that's the man that's standing before me here, representing the Southern Hills Golf Course, Jason Happy. The things that he does in getting different quotes to try to buy certain materials needed to keep our premier golf course in pristine condition. He does it with getting the best prices and the best deals, and we really appreciate that. And the important thing, I think, about this award, too, is that the fact that we're doing it in a public setting is important to relay to the citizens of Hot Springs, that that's a focus of our city staff. We have an outstanding group and department that every day are trying to do their best to save the city money. This is going to be a traveling trophy. You can keep it if you keep up the good work. But we are going to try to do this the first of every year and ensure that there's something that maybe people can strive for and highlight some of the good things that our city employees are doing. So without further ado, Jason, I want to present this to you.
Thank you very much, George. Congratulations. And here's something here. Well, this is a really cool award. I got to thank my crew as well. I mean, every single day, we use the phrase, "It's out of the budget," so let's still try to come up with fixes on how to get things done. And they bring in a lot of great ideas. So thank you, it's a great idea, and I'm going to go for it again next year, we always have to, so, but this is cool. Thank you.
I also want to thank both Misty and Kim, who really also contribute to encouraging our city staff to save money and do the job as efficiently as we can. So thank you too very much.
And to let you all know, there were many, many good options. It was hard to choose, so kudos to Jason for standing up. It's your consistency.
Okay, well, let's move on to personnel on the agenda. And I'd ask for a motion to approve the personnel actions A through H.
Motion to approve A through H personnel?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to we approve personnel actions A through H. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We move on to committee reports. Administrative and finance, Carol Anne.
We met today. We didn't have a very long agenda. Brian Spencer and Dean Hedrick talked to us first about residential tax rebate. They gave a very good presentation, and it will be on the next, they presented some information, we're going to review it, it'll be on the next agenda. We discussed, as new bit, old business, review of resolution to set part-time raise. We decided to just let that be done tonight, we'll all talk about it, we can all review it, instead of reviewing it twice, like once in our meeting and then again here. So we'll discuss that later in the meeting. We discussed changes to the official newspaper, and it is a recommendation of this committee that we hired the Fall River County Herald as our official newspaper. The surplus of building property lots, the mayor talked to us about that, and as far as this committee's concerned, we need to move forward with that. And that will come from Bob's Committee of Public Works. Mayor Adams, he discussed surplus lots and need to move forward with that also, and that will come from the public works. Also, the mayor asked us to make a recommendation about the Gen Pro solar project. We'll make that recommendation at the next meeting. We'll review it before our final meeting. Finance officer gave her a report, water and sewer fund catch restrictions. She's going to report on this also. And want to give policy, making additional provisions for park benches and tree donations.
Okay, thank you, Carol Anne. Busy meeting today. Airport advisory committee, Georgia.
Yep. We met on the 29th at the airport about 8:30, and they discussed the, and thanked everybody for full-time position at the airport. Department head meeting, I guess they had with Kim, there were five goals they had discussed with her, and we went over some of those. Some things that were brought up that aren't necessarily mentioned. Most of the time, airport does have camping available for people that fly in, I did not know that. We had an update that we need to put in our book, the update hours for the airport from 8:00 to 5:00, now Monday through Friday all year. We have hay bidding coming up in March. Talked a little bit about the peat weaning contract, the comprehensive plan, and also SEH is coming up for renewal or to get a new contract for our advisors for the airport. The contractor, the gliders are coming up, and a few other things, just maintenance shed updates and stuff like that, but most of it was pretty much the goals that they were looking at.
Okay. Thank you, Georgia. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Ron.
Next meeting will be January 11th, 7:00 P.M. Yours is at 7:00.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Anne.
It'll be tomorrow at 5:00, unless that meeting's been canceled, I don't see that so.
I believe it's still on. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Skylar.
Our next meeting will be January 11th at 10:00.
Parks, Recreation, Beautification, Cultural Development, Marty.
Parks and Recreation met today at City Hall at 3:00 P.M. In attendance, Mayor Cotty, City Administrator Barbieri, Kathy Renn, Tim Tesh, Barbara Walters, and myself. Also in attendance, representing the Hot Springs Farmers Market was Morris Nelson and Rajneel Lehman. For new business, the Hot Springs Farmers Market is requesting that the city waive the $20 event fee for use of a picnic shelter whereby they would continue to pay the $10 fee for electric. It was established that this may set a precedence. The $20 fee is fairly new and has just been implemented within the last year. There was a distinction made between public events versus private events, which brought up the possibility that perhaps the city would consider sponsoring successful, ongoing public events that draw people and support the economy. The committee agreed to continue exploring this issue with the goal of bringing the farmers market proposal before the council at the first meeting in March 2018. Also, new business, Tim Tesh and Hudson, along with Chris K. Wagner of Dakota Rising, he will be conducting an information gathering trip on how communities, volunteers, city governments, and nonprofits work together to support one another. West River Cities will include Center Mill Custer, Deerfield, Eureka Hot Springs, and Wall, and East River Cities will be Aberdeen, Smith, and Millbank. Tim also provided an update on the current progress of the Southern Hills Community Recreation Initiative. The gymnastics program has grown from around 34 young gymnasts last year to over 40 for the program this year. Also, Southern Hills Community Recreation Initiative is developing a new website, logo and banner, and are now members of the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce, so congratulations to them. In old business, discussing Yumaker Park, City Administrator Barbieri has done research regarding floodplain and parking and how that would affect development at Yumaker Park. The committee discussed potential plans for a park, for the park, including the addition of playground equipment or utilizing the area for a dog park. A neighborhood survey was suggested, and City Administrator Barbieri is willing to conduct such a survey weather-dependent to assess the needs of the surrounding neighborhoods. Barbara Walters updated on disc golf, she met with Hot Springs Junior High School. It was determined they are interested in a disc golf league. She is attempting to form a disc golf league that would include Hot Springs, Wolf Creek, Ulrichs, Douglas, and Hot Springs. And our next meeting, I believe, is Monday, March 5th. We will have our meeting next month, February, I'm sorry, March 5th at the Mueller Center. Be there to include the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Marty. Planning and zoning commission, Harleen.
The next meeting will be on January 17th, the third Wednesday of the month.
Okay, thank you. Public safety, Bob.
Public safety committee met on the 20th. Mayor Cotty, Kim, Chief Post, Georgia, Frank Maynard from Fall River County, and myself were there. We continued the discussion about the Highway 71 truck mark, truck bypass. As a follow-up to that presentation from the South Dakota Department of Transportation, the committee continued discussing issues relating to that intersection. The public safety committee is recommending the council approve the following changes related to the intersection. Support a right turn lane onto Highway 71. Reduce speed on Highway 71 heading east from 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour prior to Fall River hospital. And reduce the speed limit on the bypass to 35 mile car, old cars and trucks. We talked about the police reserve unit. Only one individual has expressed an interest to become a police reserve officer. Chief Post will continue to look for interested individuals, and has been talking with the customer service department regarding training opportunities. We discussed revising the city's ordinance, Chapter 23, taxi, couch, and buses. And we asked the city attorney to take a look at that ordinance and provide some legal guidance. We discussed approving, we adopted, approved adopting a fire and life safety inspection checklist verified by the fire department to be used anytime a building permit is issued. In new business, chief of police gave us his normal monthly update. Officer Buckholz completed police academy training in early December, and Officer Chafin is attending the police academy through March 2018. The 2013 Ford Patrol Vehicle is out of service for approximately two weeks due to mechanical problems. The police department is doing some routine housing, house cleaning. Chief Post is also looking for grants to fund the purchase of AED equipment, and also looking at Defense Logistics Agency 1033 program as a possible source for equipment to support the police department. The next meeting will be on January 17th, 2:00 at City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Public Works.
Public Works didn't have a meeting. The next scheduled meeting will be next week, January 2, 2:00 at City Hall.
Okay. Southern Hills Economic Development, Georgia and Marty.
Next meeting for Shadco will be the annual banquet, and that's January 26th at the Red Rock River Resort at 6:00 P.M.
Okay. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Skylar.
The next meeting will be February 12th.
Okay. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron.
Next meeting will be January 9th, 7:00 at the Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department.
Thank you. And the comprehensive plan coordination, Sam.
The next meeting will be next Tuesday. Yeah, next, it's the time.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Okay, moving on in the agenda, we have three resolutions that we need to consider. Resolution 2008-1, the 2018 salary wage resolution. You should have a copy of that in your package. And again, I would accept a motion to pass Resolution 2018-1.
I'll make that motion to pass Resolution 2018-1 for salary wage.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution 2018-1. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have in your package Resolution 2018-2, the designation of depositories and official newspaper. The depositories are listed there in that resolution as the Bank of the West, First Interstate Bank, and Wells Fargo, where I located here in Hot Springs. And then we do have the choice, and so the motion that will be made will have to include the name of the official newspaper that you, as a council, desire to name as the Hot Springs Official Newspaper. So I'd accept a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-2, including the name of the official newspaper.
I'd like to make that including the name of the Fall River County Herald.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approved the depositories listed and named the Fall River County Herald as the Hot Springs Official Newspaper. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment that first Fall River County Herald came out, I appreciate it, and that there was a section for Smith. Being a rural community, recognition of your kind is important to us. Fall River County, I appreciate it, that's a big compliment.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2018-2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also have in your package Resolution 2018-3. Now, you'll notice that there are two separate resolutions, and obviously, we can't pass both of them. So Resolution 1 is a recommended part-time rates, including the minimum wage increases. Am I correct in that, Misty?
20 cents.
The 20 cents.
To all the part-time and seasonal rate.
So that's Resolution number one. There's also a resolution with a number 2 on it that has been recommended by the Plunge Advisory Committee due to the fact that we've had excessive turnover and want to compete for the best and the brightest to do the seasonal work at our plunge to provide a boost in both the lifeguard and front desk employees, much like we did with the golf course a couple of years ago. That was done. Our city administrator was asked to put a cost comparison together. You should have that in front of you. This is a sheet of paper that was provided and they look at. And we also have our department head, manager from the plunge, and representative from the plunge advisory board. And if there's anything I've missed, Steve. And if there's anything I've missed, Steve or Chris, please let us, let the council know. So I would accept, I guess, a motion to either adopt Resolution 28-3, parentheses one, or parentheses two.
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 2018-3 to establish the part-time seasonal hours.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt that resolution that includes the part-time rate increase to, as a means of helping avoid excessive turnover and compete for the best and brightest. Obviously, this isn't guaranteed that that will happen, but it certainly, we hope that it does provide some assistance in that area. I would open the floor for discussion or comments.
Excuse me, could I, you said that we made information available, total cost difference to publicly aware of?
Okay.
Thank you. Can I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
I don't support this because I'm sure there are other employees in the city that are doing a good job and for various reasons deserve a raise, and I don't believe we should single out one department for a raise at the beginning of a new year, not in our budget. We work really hard on our budgets, budget time, and I don't think this is the appropriate time to do this. I'm not saying I don't support it. I just don't support it at this time and in this manner. Not single out for instance, I mean, don't need a raise, but I would rather come at budget hearings and then it would happen in a normal fashion, but I can't look at it for every employee and just single out these. That's all.
Okay, any other discussion?
Eric, hi.
Yes.
Hi, Carol Ann, I'm concerned with the timing of this, but I do have some questions for Chris. When you presented at the Admin Finance Committee and the numbers that Kim has been given to provide, the figures that we're coming up with was $4,481. What's going to be necessary to fund those positions, if I understand?
Misty and Kim and I sat down and came up with the best comparison that we could have, and I would defer to Misty. She is the expert with numbers.
And they were good enough to make it, and I've misrepresented that. What we had talked about is what we were looking at, what the city would be looking at to be about $384 a month is what the plunge would need to come up with. And you're comfortable that that can come out of the existing budget in 2018. It's not that you're asking for an additional $4,481 from the council. It's not that we have to come up with an additional one. That's going to be covered in your budget.
Correct.
And the reason for it, as Carol Ann mentioned, is that there, anybody who watches the agenda knows that the plunge is the biggest place for turnover. And it's been mentioned that you feel that this increase in wages, if approved, would certainly help you with that. So this will start, if approved, in January. My hope would be that by the time a new council is in place, the plunge would have enough information to begin looking at the trend, whether this is helping, whether it's not, whether there's some other contributing factors to what's going on. And you're sure, at least the four council members that are going to be here, that that's something you could do for them to help them decide when a budget time comes around, whether this is something they want to continue. Is that something you can do for them?
We absolutely would work with presenting, preparing and presenting that information.
Thank you.
Does that mean that if it hasn't helped, we've been affected this way?
I think it certainly will be a conversation that the council would have at that time.
I believe.
Yes, go ahead.
When Bowden came and presented his information, he said it takes about 23 hours to train someone to be a lifeguard. And to me, that's a cost that is not evaluated probably here or anywhere when you have so much turnover. That's expensive. And I'm sorry, but I can't believe that 23 hours isn't something that shouldn't be evaluated in this decision here. So I hope that that would help.
Any other discussion? Again, I think, just a comment, you know, budget is very, very important, and our budget discipline is something that we attempt very, very much to look at. But if there is a need, pressing need, budget service is a guide, and I believe that we as a governing body have a responsibility, if there is a problem that's been identified, to come up with or try to attempt to come up with a solution. As has been mentioned tonight, this proposal will fit within the existing budget, total budget for the plunge, and I'm sure that that will be, will be able to be accommodated if this resolution is passed. But I think that's an important thing to note, that we have an opportunity hopefully to solve a problem that's been ongoing. And also, one of the things that I often look at in assessing what's an important part of job responsibility, and one of the important jobs and parts of the responsibility, those that work at the plunge, has to do with life and death issues. And we need to have the most competent, best trained individuals in that area, that in any horrific event, if something tragic does happen, we have people that can be able quickly handle that. They do deserve an opportunity to, you know, to have a wage that's comparative to somebody that's working at McDonald's or some other place. So I just wanted to add those comments. And again, Chris and Steve, do you have anything that you would add before we go on?
Well, I agree with you here about the training. We're spending an awful lot of time training new ones that keep coming in because others leave. This wasn't really just popped into somebody's head and we decided to do it. There's a lot of thought went into it. And I realize budgets and budget times and everything, but I just think we've got to do a little better now by trying to hang on to the good people that we do. And if you go down and watch them, when that plunge has got a lot of people in there, they're busy. And they do have life-saving skills that they have to have and things that a lot of other people in these positions don't have to have. Somebody starts to ground, they have to know what to do, and so you can't really just give them a t-shirt and a floatie and say, well, do your job. You know, there's a lot of prep that goes into it. So Georgia, you're right, there's a lot of extra cost here that's getting incurred every time one of these turns over.
George, if I may, if you're down, Steve, I just want to clarify for the record something that was said about it will fit in the budget. Right now, our 2018 budget total for salaries and wages is $297,500. We are attempting to estimate what coverage we're going to need at the plunge for all hours of every day in the summer season, in the winter season, and whether or not we'll be fully staffed, whether there'll be first-year employees or fourth-year employees, which creates a dollar difference in their wage for the first time. We're attempting to do that. So the three different estimates we came up with for the council to review all include increases or overages in that amount. We know that we don't stay fully staffed, unfortunately. Chris does a wonderful job at her personnel management and Bowden of ensuring that they're only paying for staff that's required for the coverage that they need. So it's not necessarily a true statement that it's budgeted for, but they believe that they can afford it in the budget that they have available, but all of our estimates were on that.
Thank you for that clarification.
And I just want to make sure that you understand too that this was a direct response from a triage of dealing with every one of our, when I came in as the new city administrator, we went and sat down with every department head, and I sat down with Chris and her staff, and this came up again, and it had never been brought up in an actual conversation openly in budget. There was a problem, and it needed solving. I could have waited till budget season, that's true, but we would have had to go through an entire year of training and losing people, training and losing people, training and losing people. And one of the things that you hear most common about the plunge is that we have to become solvent. We have to become to the point where we're taking care of things. It seemed to me that because this is a different type of job, not like working at the maintenance garage where you're going to be here all the time, this is a money-making endeavor that we're trying to be a tourist destination. So we have to be competitive. And we saw a problem, and we needed to fix it, and waiting to fix it did not make any monetary sense whatsoever. The people on our front lines at Evans Plunge are oftentimes the first and sometimes the only face that they, people get of the people in Hot Springs, and we want that to be the best possible. Chris and I have worked diligently. We have plans working with the chamber, working with our library, and between the two of us, we're going to be doing more and more seasonal training to make sure that we're keeping people engaged and feeling a part of it. I'm going to be doing a class on the history of Hot Springs and how Evans Plunge ties into that. One goes without end with the other. So this is a multi-pronged method of trying to get good employees and retain those employees. We don't think that if we just, you know, raise an extra quarter, that life is going to change. This has to be an effort all the way along the board. So just understand that with this, if you approve it, comes a lot of other support.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion?
I'd like to respond, since I'm the one who, as I said, pulled into budget, it's in the budget. I certainly acknowledge that pulling in the $4,481.05 is not realistic, any more than it is to say, we're asking for some money. We don't know how much it's going to be. Approve it, and we'll let you know at the end of the year what the amount was. So if you're a couple thousand over, I may have a vote on it, I may not. But I just, I think it's important to have out there that you have looked at it, you think this is about an amount that you're going to need if somebody's sick for six weeks or whatever. I understand that. That was the point I was trying to make, not specific to the amount that you feel and not having anything drastically humped for seeing that this is probably an amount that is going to be able to get you through the year. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Go ahead.
I just personally don't think this is the right time to be discussing this. I think it should happen in budget hearings to give every department an equal opportunity to want to raise something. Is Jason there, right hand?
No, he is.
He left. Well, I know for a fact that his laborers, there's a lot of turnover there too. So I think he should have an opportunity to raise his wages as well. And I think if you do this right now, every other department is going to start coming and asking. So it's not that I don't agree that they should get raises, it's just I don't think that is the right time.
Okay, and thank you, Skylar, for your input. Yep, yep, you all hear that. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I would ask Misty that you call the roll, please.
Okay, and just to clarify, we're voting on Resolution 2018-3, parentheses two, just as it's written. Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Carol Ann Swartzenbach?
No.
Skylar Metso?
No.
Okay, the motion does carry. Again, thank you, council, and I do appreciate the debate that has gone on. That's what healthy government's all about, and appreciate the different opinions that have been brought to the table. And we certainly hope this helps solve the problem that we have in the future. So thank you all. Moving on to new business, item A. We have a possible motion and discussion to set the election date as June 5th, 2018, and combine with the school in the county at that date. I'd accept a motion at this time.
I'm the motion, George.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second then.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to set the election date as June 5th. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We also have several parades in the summer. I'd accept a motion and discussion on approving the 2018 Miss South Dakota Parade, the Fourth of July Parade, the Freedom Ride Parade, the Hot Springs High School Homecoming Parade, and the December Parade of Lights.
I'll make that motion to approve the Miss South Dakota Parade, 2018, Fourth of July, Freedom Ride, Homecoming Parade, and Parade of Lights.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approve those parades. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Also have a motion and possible discussion to approve the contract 2018-1 between the City of Hot Springs and Barnyard Veterinary Services. You have a copy of that contract in your packages. I believe it is the same contract as we had last year with that organization or business. I'd accept a motion at this time to approve that contract.
I'd approve the contract between the city and Barnyard Veterinary Services.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, approved contract 2018-1. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion?
We did add a safety, termination, or cancellation clause to it, and also addressed an issue with releasing animals on Saturdays, Sundays, or holidays, and clarified that those are real changes.
Okay.
And they recommended that the veterinary clinic can agree to by our department.
And Bob, this does agree and coincide with the recent adoption of the ordinance on animals. Any other discussion, clarifications? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving contract 2018-1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have a motion and possible discussion to approve contract 2018-2 between the City of Hot Springs and Teresa Moss for the Police Department Cleaning Services. Again, you have a copy of that contract in your packages. I'd accept a motion to approve that at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve contract 2018-2 between the City of Hot Springs and Teresa Moss for the Police Department Cleaning Services.
I'll second that.
And you meant 2018, right?
Yes.
Okay, just checking.
It's going to be hard for a while.
Any discussion?
That one's exactly the same. There are no changes to that one.
Okay, no, no changes. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item E, discussion and possible motion to approve 2018-3. This is a billboard lease for Evans Plunge Mineral Springs and Southern Hills Golf Course with roadside outdoor advertising. The location of this billboard is on Highway 79 and is north of town, and would direct the south coming traffic into. the south coming traffic into Hot Springs. I would accept a motion to accept that, approve that contract at this time.
I'd like to approve the 2018-3 billboard lease for Evans Plunge and Southern Hills Golf Course with roadside outdoor advertising.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve that billboard lease. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
Is this, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
This amount is it much? It seems like it's more than that.
We needed to do a new skin.
Oh, okay.
And this is, and this is also one for a 10 by 40, and our one is 10 by 20, so this does have a height.
Okay, good, that's what I was wondering.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving 2018-3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have another billboard lease, and I'd accept a motion to approve that lease for the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs located on the Scott Phillips property, which is on Highway 18 West. This is the important billboard that directs people into Hot Springs to the policy of them turning north and going to Custer.
I'll make that motion, George.
Okay, it's been moved.
Fast forward to the lease for the Scott Phillips.
Okay, is there a second? I heard Marty seconded that, so we have a motion that's been moved and seconded to approve 2018-4. Is there any question, comments, or discussion?
I just have one question. The one we did out on 385 or 79 compared to price we did?
I'm sorry, what?
The one on 79 is this comparative.
This is a cheaper price, they're also...
Because they were given lunch.
This one, we own the billboard, so we're just renting the space. The other one, they own the billboard, so we're renting the billboard.
Okay, good.
And theirs is pretty similar.
Okay.
Within a hundred.
All right, thanks.
Again, this is a very, very important location because it does help direct people into Hot Springs. All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. We also have item G, a possible motion and discussion to require council email correspondence to be done using the hs-sd.org email addresses, and this was suggested by our attorney. Again, there's not been a problem or an issue, but to keep from the appearance that the council is using family emails that others would have access to for official Hot Springs business, it's been recommended that we do our email correspondence on a hs-sd.org account. So I'd ask a motion to approve that request at this time.
I'll make a motion to require council email correspondence to be done using the hs-sd.org email address.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we would require council email correspondence to be done on that email address. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion?
This was done before and nobody used it.
Was it? Okay.
I don't know.
We will...
What have you addressed that?
Pardon?
How do you address that?
Well, all of the emails that come out of City Hall will go to that address. And if there are emails that come from a private address, they will be replied to the hs-sd.org. We just feel that it's an important aspect, because our attorney felt it was an important aspect to keep it on the appearance of things going on. Again, I stress, there's been nothing, this happened, and given any evidence that there hasn't been any impropriety taking place that other people have read personal, or emails on personal accounts.
Does that mean that Misty will not send me an email to my regular account or any of my accounts?
She'll send you an email to the hs-sd.org.
So I'll have to check there.
Yes.
We will work with our IT specialist to get all the new council set up with accounts, and he is going to create just a little document that tells you how you can go in and log into the shared site. So if it wouldn't happen tomorrow, obviously, we would roll it out once he got it set up, but within a couple weeks, we would intend or hope to begin. If you sent me an email to their address and said what time's the meeting, I would reply to. But if it's city-specific or confidential information, even not confidential, but just discussion regarding city business, it'll be sent to me.
What has been our email account that the city's set up for us before?
You are probably still out there, Ron, with that.
Georgia still has one.
I have.
You have one, yeah. We just have to get them, what we're going to do is link them to a single file so everybody can use your access with each other.
But we've got to be very careful.
And I'm sure there'll be some pickups as we get started, but we will make a very conservative effort to avoid that for many of your regularities. Any further discussion or questions? Yes?
I'm not going to hide behind a lawyer on this one. I raised this question.
You did.
Okay.
So for anyone to know, it came from me. It doesn't happen often, but we all know, early on in this year, there was a lot of email back and forth amongst the council that's for our eyes only, and I think it's important for the public to know that that information is for our eyes only. I didn't raise this issue because I felt anybody was misbehaving, but when the public asks the question, I want to be able to say that the email is coming to an official address, not my personal address, and I just think this is important to do.
So the shs-d.
We don't have to lie, it will be agreed up.
I can assure you that one is only an email address, and that happened because I got tired of seeing all my wife's emails.
Okay.
So I got my own email address, but I just think this is the right way to do it. We are a part of the city government. Mayor has an hs address, finance officer, Kim has one. We represent the same city, the city in the same capacity to report that.
Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. In item H, we have discussion and possible motion to authorize the finance officer to restrict $450,000 in the water fund, which is the 602 account, and like to change that amount in the wastewater fund to $600,000 as opposed to the $800,000 that's listed on your packages. We found that we are needing to make some repairs at the wastewater plant, that we're not accounted for this coming year, and so those would come out of that account, 604. And these funds would be set aside for infrastructure improvements to coincide with the 2021 road reconstruction project. I also want to point out that, here to fore, we had thought that that road construction project would be taking place in the year 2020, and that has been moved back a year. So that also gives us an extra time to save up some money to help us pay for those infrastructure improvements.
I'll make that motion, George.
Okay.
I thought it was necessary.
Okay, it's been moved then, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the finance officer, and those amounts are $450,000 to account 602 and $600,000 to the wastewater fund, 604. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on the agenda, our finance officer, report, Misty?
Thank you, George. All council members, speaking in their packets, the monthly finance statements. I wanted to clarify that they're just through the end of, through the 28th of December. They're not the year-end reports that you will eventually receive when you get your annual report in March. So as we reviewed these financial reports in our admin meeting today, we talked about how we did exactly what we hoped to do, which is meet or exceed our revenue expectations and not meet and do not exceed our expenditure expectations. So as you look at all the funds in the city and how well we did, that is because of your effort and then the efforts of our department heads like Jason, who's working the life of work tonight, and making sure that we're doing full stretch throughout the year and seeing that we're on track for revenue projections, and making sure every dollar we spend every single time is needed, and we're getting the best value for that, and I'm so glad that we had another year where we could review our financial statements this way and see the results that we were for. The city surplus auction was successful. Adding an online auction was a little different for us, and this isn't a net amount, but we were somewhere in the ballpark of $95,000 between the equipment and property that we sold. I heard a lot of good feedback from bidders as they came to pick up their items, so definitely the online, I know, was something that y'all fretted with a little bit, and we talked quite a bit about, and I think it was really successful. We're happy to have a little extra money in some of our funds and not have that extra stuff weighing the stuff. Some of the numbers are in your financial report. We haven't received the money yet, but I did estimate some of it, told us the percentage of fees would be. So we should be seeing that revenue in the next week or so. Just as a last reminder for the new student, the S D M L know, if you're interested in attending the 2018 Legislative Risk Dinner or the following day, the municipal day of the legislature, please let me know, we do have one council member attending, so if anyone else is going, there's an opportunity in our pool. Any chance to see our legislature in action is a benefit to us because it's what you do every day and it's on a bigger scale, and a lot of what we do is because of what they do, similar to the part-time increases that we have to do because of the state mandated increase to minimum wage, and that's our opportunity to get our faces out there in our community, knowing it's one that's interested and vested in the decisions our state makes. So I might encourage you, if you have the time to go, and it's nice to know that you have the opportunity in our pool, so. I talked a little bit about the 2018 approved donations. Interestingly enough, I had a question from a member of the audience about those approved donations and how much they'll be, so in your packets, we have the Boys and Girls Club and Prairie Hills Transit. I'll have the annual payments to those, plus the senior males program and the Hot Springs Senior Citizens Center in your next batch, current claims to be approved. The volunteer fire department will continue to receive monthly refunds as soon as they have the pass. So if you have any questions about those, those discussed at length, a budget time, those talks were discussed quite a bit at that time, and we're going to pay them, at least those four that I mentioned, in our first or our next batch of place, all the whole round of the year. Thank you.
City Administrator, report.
Well, I wanted to start off with making sure that if you don't have Facebook, to go on Facebook from your friends or somebody else that does have it, and go onto the city website and see the video that Jason Gausman from our, Justin Gausman, sorry, from our Chamber produced for a Merry Christmas from Hot Springs. It was the most liked and shared item that's ever been on our Facebook page. There were 410 comments, most of which rallied around, "That's my hometown, I miss it so much, I can't wait to get back, now you're making me homesick." So definitely get a chance to see that, he did a remarkable job with that. Seeing Justin's skills, doing right now has been so much fun to watch, and keep your eye on all of our Facebook pages and other elements where you're going to start seeing his work pop up. So I wanted to make a big call out to him, that was just phenomenal. For the new year, our department head had a meeting last week, we had, every department head dreamt five goals that they wanted to accomplish within their department this year, and some of them are related to actual projects that were budgeted and other things are just goals for how to work with their people, things that they wanted to get accomplished that way. I'm going to be writing down all their goals and measuring them as we go forward to see how we do. If you would like to, I could share that with the council. At the end of this month, I should have that done, and I'm using a lot of these goals then in setting up a program for actually starting to prepare for the budget now. Some things I think are going to be, things that they want to accomplish will require some things to be done in our budget, so we want to make sure that we give you the data, and I'm learning this more and more, that we need the data behind things to make good decisions. So I'm working with specific department heads to really give a full-blown background on why we need something or why we're asking for something, and so that the council can make the best educated decisions, whether they want to do it now or a year from now or whatever they determine to do, but do it based on good facts. And I'm hoping that you see a change this year in our budget process and will like the change. That's my goals for this year, is to actually make the budget season one where you leave feeling very confident about the votes that you made. And with that, on to the new year.
Great, thank you, Kim. Got a couple of things to report. First of all, we've received 31 applications for the Development Ordinator position, as Kim mentioned. I think the last meeting at has been closed. Some of those applications are not really qualified, but we do have some excellent individuals that have applied, and we'll be looking for, looking at each of those packages in the next days ahead, and I think we've got some outstanding candidates to choose from that go through a vigorous interview project, and obviously you as a council will have the opportunity to approve those, but I want to assure you that each of those packages will have been looked at in detail, and I trust that we'll have another outstanding city employee to our roles. As you know, we had a White Christmas, that meant that snowplows got out, and one of the things that I did notice and have asked Kim and our maintenance department to look at, I'm a little bit concerned at getting Evans Plunge Library and Village Center parking lots a little higher up on the snow removal list. We have a lot of people that use these facilities, and I just feel that that's an important aspect, and I think Kim is going to get with the department to review that and make sure that we can get that accomplished. Again, our city employees that work at these facilities are the ones that are required to take care of the snow removal on sidewalks in front of those buildings, and that has been done quite well, and we thank you, I thank them for their work. We had an interesting discussion, as Caroline mentioned, in our Advent Finance meeting today concerning workforce housing. The thing that impressed me was the fact that the individual that came in said, "Hot Springs is being watched because we're at the head of the pack, and you as a council are responsible for that because you passed a plan this past year about how we were going to tackle the problem of getting workforce housing here in Hot Springs." We're in the process of doing that, we had our auction, we have some funds available to tear down the old water shed garage by the water fill station and make those lots available, and so we are doing something about it. I wish it could be quicker, but it isn't, but we are moving forward, and again, I want to thank you as a council for your support and foresight to pass that resolution this past year. past year. And then finally, I want to also agree with Kim. Hot Springs is a great place, and it's especially a great place to spend the holidays. All the goodies that found on my desk, I know I certainly appreciate it, and so did my bathroom scales, but I also witnessed some anonymous giving, and people that are responsible for that, wanted to just make sure that the needs of some of the less fortunate in our community are taken care of, and that's what makes the community great. And it's not us up here voting yes or no, unserved offense, but it is reaching out and helping one another. So again, I just want to thank you as a community for what you do, and also you as a council for what you do. I had that. With that, I'd accept a motion to hear.
Motion to adjourn, and I want to thank you, George.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.